Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call this, we'll say the joint meeting, but the board of selectmen portion to order.
And I would like to also open up our special joint meeting for the Board of Finance on February ninth.
Excellent. So let's start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Great to see a lot of you folks here today. It's fantastic. We're going to get straight to the chase. We're going to start with the presentations and we'll start with Parks and Recreation, please.
Good evening.
Oh, I like this room better. You're right up front. Thanks for coming out today.
John, do you want to pick one?
So I'm Lou Valenti. I live at Four Point Road. I'm just used to doing that whenever I have to.
Yeah, so it's standard.
Standard three eighty.
I'm the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee. So I'm here on behalf of my fellow commission members. And I'm here to highlight a couple of things and to let you guys know what a great job we think the department's doing on behalf of the taxpayers of Bethel as well as the the people that benefit from the services we provide. We think that we run a very efficient department and we have a lot of reason for that efficiency. Eileen and her staff do a terrific job with, you know, with a, with a good staff that that's not a big staff by any stretch of imagination and actually is smaller compared to other towns of our side. They do a terrific job, but it's also been Eileen and the commission's vision to partner to keep down costs for the town. So we have a lot of fantastic partners that provide money. They create assets. They enhance assets. They maintain assets on our behalf. Just go up to Mitchell Park. Look at what Bethel Baseball Association has done. That brings almost all that money on their own. We can say the same thing for all of our youth programs, lacrosse, musical lacrosse, soccer, softball, football. The Bethel Land Trust basically helps maintain three of, two of our parks and a trail and the enchanted trails system to the educational park at no cost to the town. And that's, that's a part of Eileen's leadership and working closely with her. Those are all real force multipliers for the town. So you have literally hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been invested by these organizations and many thousands of man hours. And it means our budget can stay low. It means that the taxpayers don't have to pay for that. And that's all been part of the plan that Eileen has implemented. So I just wanted to, to give some good news first. Mr. Herring, if you don't mind putting your hands over your ears for a second, because you're, you're, you're going to see some, some numbers like projected numbers in terms of revenues this year. And those are very, very conservative numbers, extremely conservative numbers. In fact, Brad, I think you prepared this out that we're currently running about a hundred thousand dollars more ahead compared to last year in revenues this year. And that's money that goes right back to the general fund, to the taxpayers of Bethel. If you compare us before the pandemic, during the pandemic, we're outlier years. Those numbers don't, you know, participation was down. We're running at about $200,000 more in revenue back then. That's real money. Way outpacing the increase in costs that's going, that's saving the taxpayers money and hopefully making your jobs a little easier. And the reason why I wanted to bring that up is because we are seeking a 7.3% increase in our budget. And listen, you guys got a terrible job, but I don't think every increase is created equally because what sets us apart of most departments is we're a revenue creator. We generate revenue and in fact, a lot of our programs generate at least a dollar twenty. So we return a dollar twenty for every dollar invested in our programs. That's not necessarily our maintenance stuff, but when it comes to our programs, the town is actually making money from what we do. And if you look at salaries, because that's the big increase, and that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention, that's a 9.35% increase. Well, fifty eight thousand dollars of that is for part-time salaries. Part of that is attributed to the fact that we are part-timers. A lot of younger people, college students, even high school students. And the minimum wage, you know, we got, we got to factor in that increase for this year. But of that fifty five thousand, this is the key thing, over forty thousand dollars of that is of that increase in salaries goes to two programs that are real revenue generators, our before and after care program and our camps. We are increasing those, we're increasing the numbers for those programs in terms of the number of people that, that we're going to be servicing. And we are increasing the fee we're called, that we're charging. So if you look at forty thousand dollars of that is going to generate more income than the forty thousand dollars we're going to be expending. But to me, I, because I, I looked at that number, I'm a taxpayer, right? I don't want to see our tax, my taxes going up, but to me that accounts for a big portion of that increase. I don't think there's much more for me to talk about right now. I think that's important. I, I mentioned all of our partners. I mentioned that investing in parks and recreation is really helping to, it makes a lot of fiscal sense and it's investing in the town because of the returns that our programs generate. They actually return money, a profit, if you will, to the general fund. Now, Eileen's gonna take on, talk to you about some of the new programs and and then we're going to talk about two really important capital requests.
Okay, so just to highlight from what Lou said about our before and after care program. We are now in before and after care at three elementary schools. We've upped our numbers to forty kids at each of those times. So we can take forty kids in the morning at the three, Rockwell Johnson and Barry, and then forty in the afternoon, which is, when we first took over, is about a hundred more kids that we're taking at this time when the, the schools have been done. So that generates a lot of revenue and also helps the working parents. Cause it's a seven to five thirty program, seven in the morning till school starts and then after school till five thirty. The, our preschool program is still growing, which we do here in the municipal center. Our programs are back up to where we have twenty students in most of our classes. And that's a, a two and a half to five-year-old program. That's all day, most days during the week. Theater is busting at the seams. We presently just took our registration for our spring show descendants. And within three minutes, we had forty-five people registered and will fall with another forty on the waiting list. So we met with our staff and we are doing two show, two groups of forty kids and having four performances on a weekend. And we're able to accommodate eighty kids that want to take theater from grades two to eight. So that program is growing and in the summer there are plans to break it up into, instead of two programs, it's now going to be three programs of theater over the summer. So that will be a new program that will be running. We are, people want after-school programs besides after-care. They want art, science, they want sports. And at Johnson, at all three elementary schools, we do the sports. And at two of them, we are doing the art. We also do science at Johnson. We do kindness club. We are taking on a lot of those smaller ten to fifteen kids that want to do Mondays after-school programs.
And these are new.
These are all, these are new added on.
All new programs.
So.
That will pay for themselves.
So those are our, our highlights of our programs. We still have adults, the adults are starting to come back and take our Pilates, our yoga, a volleyball program on Wednesday nights at full as well. Summer camp, we're anticipating that we will be, we had waiting lists last year. We anticipate the same this year. But we are going to probably be able to adjust our number because last year we were still dealing with COVID restrictions a little bit. So now we can kind of, I feel like we'll be back to like a normal, regular summer camp. As well as all the sports camps that will be running this coming summer. We are still doing our, like our Easter egg hunt, firecracker, road race. We do Earth Day events. We're also planning for this summer and there's a meeting on Saturday if anybody would like to join us, but we're going to do Bethel's Summer Games, which is kind of on the Olympic spec idea of running many sporting events on one day, track and field, cornhole, disc golf, because we have the disc golf course in the complex, we're going to do events. So we are going to try to do a large event and raise money to possibly put back into our parks. That's the plan for that program. And then the other side of our department beside our program and our generating is that we are a service. We are, we are maintaining parks and facilities in town with our staff. We are, and that's a lot of, it means mowing grass, it's cutting grass, it's lining fields for games. It's also cleaning bathrooms, picking up garbage, emptying garbage cans. And all that cosmetic things that make the town, to try to keep the town looking good. And it's, it's my staff that has to do that on a regular basis. Whenever there's a big event in towns, baseball has a tournament, schools have SWC championships. My, my staff has to go back and clean up after those or provide services that are needed for those events to take place. See, so just some of the highlights that we accomplished or have done is that the disc golf, nine-hole disc golf was built and put up in the school complex, which is becoming very popular. We had a rain garden built in Bennett Park with the Northwest Conservation Group. Funded it and there's a rain garden that helped out with some of the washout area at, at Bennett.
Another partner.
And then we're also looking to do one at McCawer as well. We are working with groups, the Northwest Conservation Group as well, and a pond management company to work on the two ponds to make sure that they are kept clean and everything. And then the areas are, we cut back some of the areas and the overgrowth at McCawer. As he said, we work with the youth leagues that are always, always willing to help us and we're willing to help them. They enhancements at Mitchell Park were pitching rubbers or warm-up pitching areas. They help sod fields, this wall. We are looking at, so I left my place here, sorry. We saw, and then we worked with the land trust on the front preserve, overlook park. There's a new kiosk at overlook park that they've installed. As well as in the educational park bridges on the enchanted trail as well. And with the, the front preserve, I don't know if anyone's been there and seen the, the too many, many trees that were cut down on Plum Trees Road on the right-hand side. So we've worked with, and Lou and I, Lou mainly has worked with Larry Ritter, the tree warden in Ever Source about putting in some fir trees to block the, to one of the trails that's been exposed by that and replace trees.
Coming on Arbor Day, April twenty eighth.
So we've also partnered with many Boy Scout groups for Eagle Scout projects. We have benches at the parks. There's the, the exercise equipment that's at the park. So there's always an evolving work with the Eagle Scouts and the Scouts, even the Cub Scouts want to come and help and do something. So we're always willing to work with them. So just, just to make sure that you, we are a service and we're here to provide recreation or indoor, outdoors. People are getting out more and want more time outside. So our parks are busy. So we want to try to keep them as well maintained as we can for that.
So in summary, we, we think investing into the park and recreation is a smart investment because of not only the return that we get, and it's good for our taxpayers, but because we're providing all these services to a rapidly growing population. And it does help real estate values. You look up your town, you're going to see how, how big it is, the demographics, you're also going to see park, parks and recreation. It's a big part of what's going on. And as more people get, get moved downtown with, with limited, if, if any recreational area, right? We got high-density homes going in with the TOD and other programs. Recreation, maintaining these fields, and we do a heck of a job. We are the envy of the state with a lot of our fields. Our football field is the envy of the state, being a grass field in that condition. You will hear people coming from Greenwich that will brag, will, will talk with envy about Mitchell Park and that, and that place. I mean, we have, we, we do have some fantastic assets and it's critical that we continue to maintain them. And in fact, in the future, expand on these things as the population grows, the demand for these things are growing as well. And now we're going to, we, we have a couple of capital.
Where are you getting the capital? Do you want to, so we're going to make sure any department that has a twenty-three, twenty-four capital request that was handed out tonight, it looks like this, that they at least answer any questions that the board may have. But do you want to do their operating budget first, then have it out capital?
Yeah, I, I think that'd be better. You know, I mean, just whatever all question. Are you ready for questions?
I'm, I'm ready.
You can breathe. It's okay. That's, I'm not to talk to you, man.
I should be used to this by now, but I did never, never easy, sorry.
I don't know if it's a Brad question. Just, can you just tell us what their revenue was for last year to remind everybody?
So the revenue for last, last fiscal year, twenty-two was $750,000. The current budget for revenue for parking wreck activities, your activities.
Yeah.
She's programmed, is six hundred and twenty. So before deliberations start, which is the board of selectmen first, I will provide revenue estimates, but Eileen and I sat down yesterday and looked at it and sneak me through, we're going to bump parking wreck revenue up a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the estimate. So when you look at the one fifteen she's up, you know, it's actually mill rate wise, a fifteen thousand dollar net increase.
So Brad, can you just say that again for twenty twenty-two?
So twenty twenty-two, they collected roughly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue.
And twenty twenty-three, you.
It's budgeted at six twenty.
But you're thinking it's going to be.
It's gonna be, it's probably going to be at least seven fifty. The tricky, a lot of parking wrecks revenue comes in spring, summer.
Right, yeah.
Cause you get all the.
Yeah, we could collect like three hundred thousand dollars in a month.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
So we're, we're very confident based on past practices and what we're hearing that we're going to.
And then what we want to offer, so.
Greatly see that seven fifty. But we're being conservative because that's the responsible thing to do.
Exactly. So are we back to pre?
Oh, we're probably above.
Above pre-COVID.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we get, yeah, I mean, that's what I said, like after-school sports, after-school program, people are looking to get their, they want to get their kids back into doing a pretty regular, you know, so, so we're going to have as a department, look at how else, what, where else we can offer. So we take ideas and, and like, you know, what we else could we do with what we have space-wise and stat-wise?
Well, kudos to you for getting families and everybody back to, yeah, they're doing things.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you.
It, it's normal plus. That's what we're saying. And if you've been to any of the parks, you'll see far more people than ever before. Almost to my chagrin, seeing so many people in the parks, but also, but, but everywhere, we're just seeing the numbers and our registrants, all of that is increasing, which does help the bottom line.
Is it, do you feel like with the registrants increasing, are they coming in, is that an organic thing or are you, you know, just pushing it out more to the public?
For wanting to be outdoors.
Yeah, wanting to be outdoors, but, but actually all your programs, just your programs.
I, I think the participation is that we're, we're affordable.
Yeah.
We're local within, within the community and people go, and for the convenience of, some of them are right after school. Some of them are at like, you know, right here in the municipal center with preschool, we're able to, they're right here. So I think it's all that, that, and, but I think the affordability is one of the main reasons.
And to family, you know, to our inner families, you know, that, that's why a lot of those programs are, are seeing so many people so they can get their kids there and get to work.
Sure.
And they have something for the kids to do after, after work.
So, so we're in the budget with respect to marketing, like how do you market yourselves?
We, we do Facebook. We also have our, our computer program that we use for registration. Once everyone registers and has an email, we email out our flyers to every person that has that. We email out any additional camp programs or anything like that. We do print them, but it's mainly social media, school, the school newsletter. When they send it out, they'll send out that as well. But our, the main focus is our recreation software. We can email every participant that's ever taken anything.
Very cost-effective.
Yeah.
Say, printing cost.
Yeah. So that gets anyone that's ever, that's in our system or asked to be in the system to get a, of information. Yep.
Yeah, I have two questions, if you don't mind. So your line item fifty-three sixteen is under programs. That's, that's your definition line. And your increase is seven percent for thirty-six thousand. What is in your program? You know, how do you get that number? What, what do you consider program cost to get the thirty-six thousand in the total of seven percent increase?
It's the cost of the instructors that we use for those programs, the teachers or the tennis pro that teaches the tennis programs. All the preschool teachers that are, though that money is in, the instructors are in that line item. So anything that's a program, we pay the instructor and, and like, they're not, they're, you have to pay. If you want quality programs, you have to pay quality staff.
So I guess where my question, Lou started the presentation with nine point three five for salaries is going to jump off the page. And he mentioned that was for, you know, salaries for new programs. So is it in two numbers?
Well, that's, that's a salaries for the summer camp and the before and after care in that salary item. And they support those two programs. And that's, and that salary too is, is all full-time staff. It's all overtime that we have to incur for maintaining fields, picking up garbage on the weekend. That eighty thousand salary is, includes all those like union salaries increases that's in that salary, but forty thousand of it is summer camp counselors and before and after care increases in their rate.
And those are two, two big revenue.
Generators.
One of them does like what? It returns a dollar thirty-three for every dollar I've spent.
Good. And, and thank you for the segue into that. So revenue-based programs are great. Tell me how you're charging a family that could afford to be in the program or not. So, so if somebody wants to be in a program, but they can't afford it and, and you're, and you're telling the board of finance, we're making a hundred thousand, but are we losing kids on the sideline?
No, because we work with Megan in social services and if she feels they need the assistance, she works with them with what they can afford. And/or if she finds money in other avenues that help offset the cost of that program, because we do get some requests for, summer camp is a big one that people request to have assistance and or like theater sometimes. So we work with them, but then there's other programs that generate more money than what maybe another program. So it kind of offsets each other. So.
So you feel comfortable that kids aren't left behind?
No, no. And, and if someone, if Megan feels that person, that child needs, this will help them to be in that program. We will waive the fee and find the funds somewhere else.
That's a great question, John.
Yeah.
And also our fee structure compared to other towns is lower.
Okay, but I want to make sure there isn't a special situation.
We turn, we turn nobody.
Because mom says no, because they don't have the two hundred.
Right, right. And we usually use Megan's. Her, her guidance on making that final decision, but if a mom comes in, and we also do payment plans.
Great answer.
And payment plans is.
We like those questions.
Yep.
Thank you. So I, I think what we're hearing is the, the top salary is for your people to do the maintenance on the parks and everything. And then the programs are the people, I'm sorry, is the money for the teachers to put the programs on.
Right.
The theater.
Right, right. Like, you know.
Labor, but it's, it's based with the programs.
They do appear at two places, which is just a little confusing.
But the programs, they're not on the books, right? Are they independent contractors like?
No, no, they, we, we, they, they are, they are hired, like, yeah.
So they're hired.
Yeah, there's like, some of them are like tennis. There's a few tennis that we just, they're, they're a company. So we pay that. They're like a tennis company. So we pay them directly, but like preschool can't, preschool programs, we pay them as staff. They're, they're paid on staff, but they're paid out of that program account. Okay, there, yeah.
But it is a little confusing. But yeah, but if, but if you think about the eighty thousand, that's all the salaries that the people were directly employed by us, including the part-time people. And then special instructors, they will fall underneath that, that other number.
Programs. Prepare a lot of fields.
Yeah, they do. Those are not revenue generators.
I know we have a couple of people on Zoom and I know they're muted. Bob, Brian, is there any questions?
Couple of them.
Yep. Here comes Bob.
Yeah, Nick, I, I do have a, a question. I don't want to jump in front of Brian, though. I don't know if Brian has his hand up.
No, you're good.
Good. First of all, thank you very much, Lou, Eileen. That was a fantastic presentation. I think you guys really went into the depth and the finances that makes it easier for us to understand. So thank you very much for that. I, I do have one question and just to be clear, I'm not picking on, on Parker Rec with this question. In fact, if you look to the roughly one point nine million dollar increase on the town side, that number is comprised primarily of salary increases, right? Like thirty-nine percent of that one point nine overall increase is a salary increase. So I'm going to ask you a question that I'll likely be asking every department if, if no one else on the board does. And that is, it kind of ties into the question you, questions you were answering. I, I take it the increase in, in salaries, the increase in programs does not include any new headcount? Is that fair? Isn't that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate.
Right, but, but for headcount in, in revenue-producing programs?
But for that, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That, that was really my only question. So thank you. I appreciate it. And thanks again for the, the presentation, though I, I, based on the screen, it looks like we need to get a bigger presentation table for the next time Lou is visiting.
It was cozy.
Hey guys, Brian Turgeon's up? God, Brian.
No, Nick, I'm, I'm satisfied. It was a great presentation. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Brian, would you say it's the best one yet?
I would say by far, it's the best presentation I've seen tonight.
So far, it's the best one. What's a part? Okay. All right, let's do the capital. This is what I'm really been waiting for.
There we go.
Yes.
So the first thing, though, is we want to thank you guys for, for purchasing that property on South Street for future parking. We were, we are, have an inadequate parking now at, at Parlo Park, and that was a big investment and we appreciate the support we got from the Board of Finance.
Great, thank you for that capital report.
Now here comes, yeah.
So, so I, I, on my capital items, there are several like small things and the only two things I, I like to talk about, and then if you have questions about the other ones, I can answer, but the two most important ones are, we need to resurface or redo the, the tennis courts in the school complex. They are, well, during COVID, for those two years, they were probably the most popular outdoor thing besides everyone walking in the parks and doing that. And they are an asset within the school complex. So when we put in a hundred thousand, we thought we could like fill in the cracks and repaint and be okay. But as we took contractors out there to look at this, that's not the case. They're twelve years old. And we were given a ten-year lifespan on what we had done twelve years ago. So I have in your, I think it's within your open go, this document, did you put that in? Yeah. So there's a, there's a sheet there that shows two prices on redoing the tennis courts. One is the posting concrete tennis courts, which has a twenty-year life expectancy, life of the tennis courts. And that's eight hundred and twelve five is the price. And these are state contract prices that I have from Gordian, which we're using to do the bathrooms in the front. So I'm not, you know, that they're under state, the state contracts and I the lowest price I think we can get for doing these. And the second price is to re-mill up the present asphalt and re-asphalt them and do everything else. Replace the fencing, the sidewalks around the tennis court. So do it all. But just do a ten-year, another ten-year of pavement and painting is five sixty-five is the price that I have.
And you're saying thousands, right?
Thousand, yes.
And I box those on the capital plan because it's an either or.
Yeah, it's an either or.
Yeah.
Well, and then, then these are the, these are what I got to do everything up at those tennis courts, new fencing of the sidewalks around them and everything. You can, we could elect not to do fencing. We could elect not to do the sidewalks. We could elect not to do certain parts of it to make that price go. Then again, it's like piecemealing everything again. So.
But what's the condition of?
Well, the fencing, the fencing. Well, the fencing, the fencing we didn't do twelve years ago and that were up before that. So we're talking, they're probably eighteen years old or twenty years old, the fencing. So it should be replaced. It's okay, you could maybe just do mesh and not do posts. You know, there's there's ways we could save money by just not, you know, but once you start, like if you do the post and concrete, you really have to dig everything up, you know, so. You know, and there's, you know, different things with that.
Yeah, um, I was just thinking about, so resurfacing just literally means resurfacing, not counting any fences or.
Right, it's just like you would, um, yeah.
Like mill it, re-mill.
You were mill it and then and then paint it. And that would last ten years. That five hundred and sixty-five includes the fencing and doing it all.
So there is, there is a lower number, yes.
Right, so there's. The eight hundred is the post-concrete, the most expensive one that lasts twenty years and doing all the everything around the site.
Okay.
The five hundred and sixty-five is just paving.
We try to have a little tighter meeting around here.
The resurfacing fence sidewalk. What's post and concrete, that's what it.
Oh, that's the, it's a post-concrete, it's cement, and they put wire like a a wire cable in it and it lasts longer. There won't be any like of the cracking and all that issue won't happen as soon as what a a paved road does.
That's a twenty-year fix.
Thank you. That was my question. So are you talking about the surface when you're talking about that? So it'll be a twenty-year surface?
Yes.
Good.
Right.
Yes, and the fencing and the sidewalks and everything.
It's all included in that eight hundred and twelve.
That should go twenty years too.
Most likely, yeah.
Twenty years.
Right.
I have to ask kind of a silly question, perhaps, um, with respect to tennis. Are they using it for pickleball?
In in the, in this, it has uh, lines painted for pickleball and we could use it.
Good.
I would say, and we've been discussing that in the future, we'll be looking for a location for pickleball somewhere.
Yeah, it's.
There's two courts right now dedicated, so.
Fabulous, thank you.
So when I was a kid about ten years ago and they built that. Better about nine thirty. Wasn't there was when adults would use it, you had to have a pass, right? I mean. You're gonna talk about the revenue side now.
I I these are, this is not a revenue generating thing, but I I will ask.
Still, I guess I was, do we, do we charge adults to use this recreationally or the gates are open now?
Open and the people can use it and the it's the common courtesy of play for a while and let somebody up. The the passes may come into play when pickleball or like that's what one of the complaints I get is that tennis people are going to play and the pickleball people are on there and they can't play and there's waiting and that's where the passes were when when I first started, that the passes were being done because it was more to regulate people getting off the courts, not necessarily as a gener- a gener- revenue generator.
Okay, so my question was leading towards, how many people are using this? Bethel residents?
Oh.
The pass would tell you, but you know, now.
No, that's true. And you you don't know where the residents are. That's that's also true. I mean, if you're there in the summer, you know, uh, those spring, summer, fall, those courts are generally packed. And of course, the school uses them.
And then we also regenerate revenue off of tennis camps, classes. Tennis courts through tennis lessons and camps.
I've been driving by thirty years. I haven't seen one good volley from them. Kind of waste money. All right, thank you. I just have a question. You know, we're gonna try to get this capital plan in order of how the need is there, so we have a better idea. Is this in any kind of order or it's just your needs here?
Just my needs, I can send you the order.
They go from smallest to largest. Sometimes it looks nicer.
So I can send you the order, but I would say the tennis courts, we would like to see if we could get it sooner, well, as soon as possible, so we could contract with the company to start as soon as school gets out.
But but rather than sending it, you could actually, there's only six items. That's all right.
And 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 as an aside, I understand we have like, uh, you know, the next great uh, tennis player that moved into town. This is a true story, moved into town, so uh, you know, if this year we're, we can get through with it, but for next season, the literally the surface conditions may be a problem for the CIAC. We may not be able to have home, high school, tennis um matches because of the how quickly it's degrading.
Right, so can I get two number ones?
You can try. One in one day.
Well, I I have to, I have to go with Parloa Park and the tennis courts are two number ones. Just because they're on this plan, we are working on other, like as I said, we're working with the group to try to raise money, but so that would be, I would say number two would be the small utility vehicle that's on there for fifteen thousand. Because that vehicle would be, and I I uh, is the vehicle that I have to have to be able to pull the new equipment to keep maintain the turf field. And make it clean and have it clean.
That's that's turf specific.
Right, so the utility vehicle, though, is multi-purpose. Like I could utilize it for picking up garbage in the complex by having staff weed whack around the complex, do other things and just have it sweep the turf and then it sits. It will be definitely used for other aspects of our department, but it, I don't have a vehicle that can pull the equipment that the turf field has, that we need for the turf field.
I think what you're saying, if you don't get the other equipment, you really don't need that small utility vehicle.
I have the other.
And just a, just a super quick note on Parloa Park, because we don't want it, that that doesn't have to be in front of everybody, but we're we're hopeful that it's not going to cost taxpayers a dollar. Based on, I mean, who knows, things can change, I know. But based on the money that was allocated in ARPA and then additional money that we're very optimistic of receiving in grant money that with that it may be a two-point-five million dollar price tag, but it shouldn't cost the taxpayers in Bethel a dollar.
And will it be a revenue builder?
We, we, you know what, we'll make it a.
Everybody forgets the soft cost with the three employees, your contract for the lawn mowing, you know.
There's ways when a facility is done and upgraded that you can run other programs and just the turf field, the perfect example are, we haven't even tapped in to the revenue that could be generated from that could that could help off that projects like the Parloa or whatever, you know what I mean? There's there's revenue within, yes. Is we could run a program at Parloa once it got redone to. Yeah.
Yeah, there's a capital list here of three pages.
So just to be clear, so number one is the Parloa Splash Park or and or the tennis courts.
I would say.
The parking lots for work in Parloa are also on here. So but your your top two items are the improvements to Parloa Park.
And the tennis courts.
And the tennis courts.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, but we think that.
So we will make tennis courts one then.
I agree with that.
I think a pickleball court.
Well, I have to find the cost of the.
The additional parking, right? Um, being really important. And is that what's on your parking lots for work in Parloa?
Well, part, well, actually, the parking portion um, is um, of the existing parking lot, which also needs to be upgraded is part of the the two-point-five million dollars. So that would not be part of uh, that would not be a.
So we left it in there because we didn't know, like with the the ma- major project, that would like the parking lot has to be done, whether the improvements to Parloa happens or not.
So would that be number um, yeah, three for you?
Three, yes, because the work.
The new parking lot.
Yes, that there, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's a good question.
Hey, Brian, you're up next.
Hey, um, quick question. On the tennis court resurfacing, you said that there was a lesser number if we just resurfaced the tennis court this year, what what's that number equal?
It's five sixty-five. Oh, without the fencing? So that would be
So.
Four thirty-five.
Twenty-five.
Five, four twenty-five. Placing the fence.
And how much for the sidewalks?
Well, that's included in the one forty. That's fence, gates and sidewalks. So you, so one sixty-five minus the one forty thousand, which is the.
All right, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Would we be able to go back to the prioritizing? Just if I I want to see the numbers like one, two, three, four, five, and then we can talk about them.
Okay, so one would be.
We know what all your ones are.
Right, so two is the utility vehicle, right? Three is the parking lot. Four would be the parking lots at McCower and Bennett. Five would be um the vacuum collection system for the vent track. Um, six would be the sand pro. And then seven would be the reacher cab. And then eight would be the versalor. And we don't even rate the Parloa Splash Pad. So.
The buyout of the lease truck.
The buyout just makes financial sense.
Yeah, but so that could be whatever.
Because otherwise they'd need another vehicle anyway. Bob Manfredo, did you have anything?
I do have a question, Nick. Thanks. Um, to to Lou and Eileen. Um, when I think of the tennis courts and and I and my family, we do use it quite a bit during the summer, which probably is the basis of John's comment that he's never seen a good volley, but but is it, is I I think about it almost in terms of that's protecting an asset that exists, doesn't it? I mean, I remember going up there and seeing cracks kind of in the surface and I I was concerned that well, maybe, you know, this is a wasting asset almost. So in 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 trying to prioritize things from the standpoint of something new versus protecting something that exists, is there that consideration of the tennis courts that, you know, again, we got to make decisions across a number of different asks? But is this the case that we really need to do this to protect an asset that already exists or or otherwise? You know, I think Eileen, you told us this was a hundred thousand dollars, what, a year or two ago? Is it going to be multiples of the five or the eight, three or four years from now? It, is there as a long-winded kind of long-winded intro to the question of, is there an aspect here of protecting an existing asset that may trump, uh, sorry for the use of that word, may may supersede other projects?
That's a perfect characterization, right? To start off with that. Not that, not the Trump part. But protecting the asset, and that's exactly where we're at now. If you know, it was designed for ten years, we're in the twelfth year now, and it's showing its age. And I know that is a priority for everybody that's up here. We don't want to see the assets that we currently retain. We don't want to see those be degraded and become more expensive down the road. But yeah, that is definitely why we make that our number one, because it's been existing at that, and it's an existing act that we have a responsibility for maintaining.
And it also goes along with the way the complex is. I mean, we have a state of the art complex now. And and to have the tennis courts redone. We, you know, I, and I know it's a concern like, like added counters, but people come to play in tournaments, people will come to do things, they will buy food at this, they will go to Famous Pizza, they will go walking through Target. The soccer team has like, you know, how, I don't know, it's like two hundred teams come on Columbus Day weekend and you go into the stores and you see soccer jerseys all over the place. And and you could do a tennis tournament, you can do, you know, so every asset in that complex generates other revenue besides Park and Rec and for the town itself. It generates revenue for all the businesses in Stony Hill to here downtown.
Excellent point.
And i- it's that, and that complex is the state of the art right now. With that turf field, you know, you just can't, you you can't find anything better than what we have up there in that educational park. Except for the tennis courts.
You you mentioned earlier, we're talking about um Parloa and some grant money. I mean, has there been any grant money that could come towards the tennis courts? Because I know.
We are working with.
Yeah, we're working on that right now, right. And there's a one point, there's a, an ass that's already out there and we've been told that the prospects are very good. And that we, that we, that we paid for it. And there actually may be a little bit left over. Well, um, from the money that's dedicated right now, which is currently one point five million. That's why we ask that that continue to stay there, but it may not all be needed. There may be a few hundred thousand dollars if we get what we're, what we're, we're hoping to get.
Right.
Um, left over then. But until then, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're asking that we keep that money there because things obviously can change.
The grant money that you would get then could go to either item. It's kind of general enough that whatever's left over.
The the one point five is ARPA.
But you mentioned another.
God has got to go to, it's it's Parloa Park specific.
The additional money.
Yeah, so the additional money might be more than.
Understood.
Maybe more than we need all.
We'd have leftover ARPA.
Leftover ARPA, that's exactly, and that's what we hope. That'd be a few hundred thousand dollars that you you could apply to something else. But until then, there's no guarantees. It's something that won't be allocated until the middle of the year till June. So that's why we're, that's why we're asking you guys then hang in there with us until then.
Anybody else on the uh, on the monitor at home? Want to ask a question? Bob, Brian?
I think they, I think they asked.
Yeah, but sometimes they have others like I do.
We have a lot of questions for Paula with the tax collector.
It's fair to mention, she brings in.
You're gonna start a fight between the assessor and the collector.
Well, that's true. I didn't thought about that. Right, right. Okay, so uh, next up, of course, is our tax collector.
What do I have? Let's see. Um, so for the salaries, obviously, I got two employees doing steps. That's where that is. Office expenses, um because of the postage increase going up. Um, not only did it go up this month, it's going up in summertime again. Um, my vendor, U S, who does the marrying for our tax bills and everything, they're looking at a seven percent increase right now. Um, of course, I did not go up that far. Uh, new hires uh, for Jews in education or doing training courses, of course, um my clerks have two more classes before they can get certified. Which they have to be in the office for three years anyhow, so we have time for that, but they're still taking courses. Plus, my assistant and I have to keep up on our certification classes. And then the mileages for the training and the seminars.
Um, and I know Bob's gonna ask this, but the the six point three, again, those are contract obligations and and their steps besides the increases on negotiated salaries.
And uh, Clericley, so two of the four members are in the Clericley Union. It's two years of raises because the contract was up.
Kind of crazy question. Uh, we spend a lot of money on postage, obviously. Uh, there are a lot of companies are able to go out and do I'd say email and online. Is that something that state statute keeps us from doing in your world?
Yeah, come out of those.
Have to mail the bills. Okay, is that something that if you were, if you were, if you were queen for a day, would you get those all changed? I, is there, is there a functional way to do it that people would know?
Your iCloud is the master, the, when they make an online payment.
Right.
Right.
So.
They do make online payments and stuff, but bills have to be mailed, it should be mailed.
Right, I understand, but it's there. And I'm saying, is there a way that we could do it for an online group if they wanted to do it and then follow up with paper? If the state statutes were less, like is that something we should be advocating for at the state level? Because postage is going out of control.
Oh, it is.
A lot of money.
Yeah, we can get it passed through the.
Yeah. The legislature, something that you think.
The above.
Yeah, I know you, I know you have some people who are frequent plotters are not going to pay. You have to go out, but. It's a reasonable thought that the statutes got out of the way.
Yeah. Some of your people, some people that signed up for it, get the mail and the email, correct?
Yes.
So they're already collecting the data in case that ever changes.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the person has to opt into it.
Not every day would do it, but okay.
Paula, one, one of the, do you play tennis or not?
I, I like the golf course in Buffalo.
Uh, Bob or Brian?
Nothing for me, Nick. You asked the question that I would have asked. Thanks.
No, nothing for me.
Anybody else? Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. I think I was quite this so far.
And, and second best, second best.
I'll see what Izzy does. Alright, my butt. My butt is naturally not bad. I'm looking for a six point ten percent. Increase. Really where most of my increases are gonna be are in. My cost of my NADA books. They went up substantially. Last year was eighteen ten. And this year I'm looking at, explain them and let me get them. Of course, I don't have it all in order here. This year it went from the basic, let me get it here. I'm gonna get my eyes to go across, was thousand seventy-five for, it's fifty-five cents per vehicle. Plus my additional books cost me six hundred and sixty. This year the base is going to thirteen seventy-five plus the six sixty. So that's a, that is quite a bit of increase. I'm hoping next year I won't need that, but I think they're trying to extend the D M B one more year before they go into that graduated. Um, schedule. So I might need another one more year of the book. Excuse me, the books being expensive. My other cost was my, um, so that was that and the Marshall Swift, which we use for our. It's our, our real estate valuation. So if you had to break things down, that's that book that we get. It went up a little bit. I can't, I don't have it. But that went up a little, which made that my big, my big increase. My second is my contracted services and I have no control over that. That's about a four, four point five percent increase. So my books, I also was trying to get onto the, um, re- real estate site to get their information. And they won't let me do that. So after I already asked for that money, I, they want, no, you can't have that. So I took that out of there. So I gave you back two hundred and fifty dollars.
What, what is our primary vendor for the, uh, increase in vendor costs?
For, um, we use, um, three different, we have Time Bond.
Yep.
We have, um, our Tyler, which is our, our revaluation company. Um, and then quality. Control for our admin system.
And it's, uh, two of the three positions are union. So it's two years of the raises and one of the people was on steps.
Also, two of our people now, on both my girls are both C C M A certified. So that's wonderful because that gives them more education on. On the real estate market and understanding it.
So, uh, so with. So with three employees, there's almost thirteen thousand dollars worth of. Salary increase, is that right?
Yeah, it's just under six percent. But again, uh, a step with one of the employees is on a step is five percent. Two and a half percent. So sorry, two and a half percent is. Uh, and now that person's at a hundred percent.
So it's definitely two and a half percent and it's two.
Yeah. Yes, because that kind of, the clerical contract is so.
And she finished up in December.
Yeah.
With her steps.
But that's why, yeah.
Did anybody call about the reevaluation or no? No, you, you've been pretty quiet this month.
Right now about twenty-eight applications for up here. So I will be very busy. I've gotten, I have six dates set in March. I might have to add some more. So you won't see me in March.
Brian, uh, Bob, you guys, anything?
I think we've seen about a thirty-three that increase. Go ahead.
Brian, you're up.
I said nothing for me. I'm good.
And Bob?
Yeah, ju- just a quick question. Izzy, um, you mentioned Marshall Swift, uh, for real estate assessments. Is that like a, just a desktop audit of what's? Inside the home?
You know, we use our camera system, but our, but computer generated system. But this gives us the background if we wanted to actually, years ago, you used to have to take a book and literally put all those factors in. Um, our computer system does a lot of that for us now, but it's nice to have that system to look back. Um, at our, our values and the way that they're factored. They're by region, they're by numerous things.
Got it. So if somebody comes in to appeal an assessment, you'll, you'll show them the Marshall Swift data.
Really a lot, um, more commercial. Um, because that gets into ceiling heights, you know, shelf buildings, you know, fire resistant.
Yep, got it. Okay, thank you very much. That's it for me, uh, Nick.
Thank you, Bob. John, this question's for Brad. Brad, so these union contracts, they just got negotiated. That's why we're catching up on the two years.
Yeah.
How many years forward are these contracts?
So the. The one's been settled, which is the clerical contract. It's a three-year contract.
So you mean, we only have one more year because we just.
Well, no, because budget-wise, we're in the second, this budget is the second year of the contract.
Okay, one, two, and then it's even more.
It's because the budget's out. So really we're seven months into the contract.
So next year's salary will just reflect whatever they negotiate for a contract per year.
Yeah.
Not catching up and being.
Correct. And, and, uh, one of the accounts we'll cover later has the wage adjustment account. Those adjustments were in the budget last year. Um, they were in the wage adjustment account because obviously we can't tilt their hand and say, this contract, we're gonna budget for this.
But is this how we back fund some of these numbers?
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Um, for the record, we just had a quick sidebar, everybody. You were just comparing notes with the, uh, the salaries and they, uh, from the last time around.
We're not gonna impeach you.
No, I'm just, I'm just making sure. I put it all on the record. No.
I think Z is just saving, saving the first.
No, that's why, that's why I mentioned it. Uh, uh, the, the last question I kind of had, when you were talking about not being able to access the Realtor database. What information we're looking for? Is there still something, another avenue that you perceive that you need?
For the Tyler.
No, you were like asking for access to the Realtor database.
Oh, yes. I would like to have the real estate listings, actually one there that I could access them. So that helps maybe for and after pictures, you know, so if somebody remodels a house.
Right.
And they had bought it five years ago. It's only that I can say, hey, wait a minute. No, the house didn't look like this. This is how it looked.
Right, and, and to the best of our knowledge, there's no municipal way to get in there because you're not a Realtor.
No. I tried. I thought they told me I had it and I said, okay, and then they go, no, you didn't.
I have one, I'll be down there later. Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Nick's asleep at the wheel. He said he was gonna be looking for raised hands.
Oh, yeah.
I've been looking at, sorry, Brian.
Totally went up for five minutes, Nick. That's fine. Hey Brad, in, in terms, in terms of the wage contingency account. When we're listening to all these increases in salary and they look like they're six percent or whatever they are. Does the wage contingency amount go down or does that remain the same?
So when we get to ten four twenty, you'll see it, but the last year, the wage adjustment account was four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The budget this year for it is three thirty-four. Um, and the reason it's still so high is because the police contract's not settled. So the police contract in the wage adjustment account is two years where the potential increases for the police.
Right, but like in Izzy's presentation, that six percent, a lot of it has been absorbed in the reduction in your wage contingency account, correct?
Correct, correct. Thank you.
Great, we have the senior center next.
I've been waiting.
There's a coloring book?
Okay, so good evening. Um, I first would like to start by just inviting anyone that hasn't had the opportunity to come down to the senior center to please come down and. And, and see it. And we'd love to give you a tour and show you or explain to you the forty different programs a week that we provide. Um, the meal program, special events, and then our travel program. We travel both domestically and internationally. So the newsletter that I just gave you on the bottom, the pink one, has a tab on the side and that shows the thirty trips that we're doing this year. Fifty, fifty and older. Um, the graph that was on the top sheet. Um, describes the membership. We have one thousand ninety-seven members in the senior center. The bottom graph is the participation of people and programs. The bottom column on the right side is the participation through December of twenty-two. The highlighted area is an estimate what we anticipated will be throughout the fiscal year twenty-three. So our budget is adequate for running the programs at the senior center. I'm asking for an additional two thousand dollars on for our ceramic program. We're restructuring it. And changing the model of it to make it more efficient. The two thousand dollars would be used to pay for supplies. And then when we sell those supplies to the participants, that money would go into revenue. So even though it's not really a revolving account, it would act as such.
Yeah, the estimated revenue for that, when we start getting into that for, before the negotiations, there is a two thousand dollar budget in revenue for that.
So what are you budgeting for revenue?
It was thirty-four, it would be thirty-six.
Is that an ongoing program that you have?
Yes, yep.
And have we, you've got these increases before, like this is two thousand for this particular program?
Right, because we're restructuring the whole program. The way that it's being run, yeah, to buy supplies and then to have them, um, purchase the supply. So everything is accounted for and.
How did you do before?
Um, we did it before that the instructor had. She was operating with a kitty in the, um, and this goes way before my time, but this is the past ten years when I was here also. So she had a kitty, she would buy greenware, which is, then you have to clean it and fire it and then it becomes a ceramic bisque. That they would use and paint. The, all the other supplies that they use, the wiring, the paints, the stains, the brushes, things like that came out of our regular budget. So now we're just trying to streamline everything so that it's.
So it's one stop.
Right.
And then you can account for it.
Yes.
I got it. Any other questions?
Bob or Brian?
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple of questions. I guess first, Lisa, just to confirm, it seems based on the numbers that the answer's gonna be no. I, I take it there's no new headcount in the salary numbers?
No, there is no new headcount.
And Brad, um, if I was looking at the information in the budget book correctly. For fiscal year twenty-three, there was a projected revenue number of forty-six thousand. On an activities number of sixty-five thousand. Is, uh, are those the right numbers?
Um, I'm looking right now. That is thirty-four, but it might have been. If you're wrong.
Let's see, I, I may have picked up a wrong number.
Was the projected revenue for fiscal year twenty-three is forty-six thousand. Um, for the next year, it'll be forty-eight thousand.
Okay, so forty-eight thousand on a request of sixty-seven. So that ratio is flipped. From park and rec. Is that the way to think about it? So whereas park and rec's programs are. Let's just call it profit generated. The, these programs or these activities don't generate a net profit.
Well, it's similar to park and rec that some of the activities that they do. They charge for, some they don't. Well, park and rec charge for them, but not every park and rec program makes revenue. Not every senior center activity makes revenue. Some of them are service-based. Like Eileen's total budget is one point seven million and we're anticipating seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue. Um, so, cause you gotta look at some of the salary line is also for programs. So, um, like, let me go back to that. So if you look at the program request for park and rec is five hundred and thirty-four thousand, anticipated revenue is seven hundred and fifty thousand. But the B A S, the before and after, and camp counselor's salaries are paid out of the salary line. So it, if you broke that out, I don't think the programs account brings in dollar for dollar. Overall on some of those, it depends on the programs.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about it in the aggregate because to your point, you know, you can't look at all the disparate little, little pieces. Um, in, in park and rec, if I understood that presentation correctly, and there's a real question about whether if I did or not. But their actual revenue came in even, even higher than what they projected. So a hundred and sixty grand higher than what they even projected. I'm just trying to get a sense for the senior center. To, to Lisa's point, anyone who hasn't been down there should really take a, take a visit. I wish, the place is rocking, right? And so I was kind of just getting a sense for, um, how these activities. Play out to the budget like the, frankly, the park and rec does. And I, I think what you're telling me is you, we gotta take it in the aggregate. That's right. But that the, again, the, the ratio is roughly inverse of what the park and rec. Rev, um, revenue ratio is, is, again, understand that that's not, you know, scientific precision. But is that kind of ballpark right?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I, yeah, I would agree with that. The, um, and the senior center, they're starting to get back to their pre-COVID levels. But pre-COVID levels, their high mark was fifty thousand dollars in revenue. We're still not even protecting that for next year. So hopefully they bring it in, but I, you know, we're being a little more conservative because of the sensitivity of the population of the seniors.
And we're about eighty-five, ninety percent, I would say.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Lisa, same thing with the park and rec, you don't turn away anybody for.
Never, no. If they can't pay, then we bring them over to the side and show them. And the same thing with our meal program. So if anybody's hungry in town and they can't afford it, and the same thing with our van. So if they need transportation and they can't afford it, no questions asked, ever.
Can you talk more about the meal plan? I'm just curious about the program.
Yeah, so what we have two. So one is we do a lunch and learn program on Monday. So when I first started, we had people calling all the time that wanted more good with seniors. So we did, we developed this lunch and learn program where they have to provide lunch free for thirty people to come in. Um, and I won't speak to really anyone. They have to come through a lunch and learn program because they're not marketing, made the marketing secrets. Um, and then they come in and they bring a lunch and it's always senior related topics that come in. So we've had things, we've had doctors come in for hip surgeries, knee surgeries, home care. Um, we've had someone that did tattoos. And it sounds funny, but somebody that goes through cancer, that loses their facial hair can have tattoos done. Um, tubs, specialty tubs, all kinds of topics. So that's a great program. The other one took us about seven years to get in. That's called the Congregate Meal Plan. So that's what they have at a lot of the senior homes, like down at, um, Bishop Curtis Homes. And the state provides meals, and it's three dollars, and they get super salad and entree, so meatloaf, potatoes, vegetables, a roll, um, and a dessert, milk, juice, and a free piece of fruit or cookie or something, all for three dollars. So that's, we've noticed a big difference for, from some people that particularly, um, well, from some people that um are participating in the meal plan, that aren't getting proper nutrition at home, that their, their whole mental state um changes when they get proper nutrition. So it's really important. So we try to push that. We have a nice program. We have two people that run it through the state. We don't pay for that at all. So it doesn't cost the town anything.
Is that only one day or?
No, that's on, our lunch and learn is on Monday, and that is on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and we leave half a day on Friday.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Good.
Hey Bob, I was talking to Lisa earlier, and when you get off a holiday, they, they miss you down there.
Well, God knows, I am age eligible and then so.
Christmas tree requests.
They missed you for the last hot dog day.
Thank you, Lisa.
Hey Megan.
Hi, everybody. Conceding social work here. I, um, could I just ask you, or just a process thing for those who are on the phone, and for those of us who might not know, can somebody say the account number?
So it's twenty-two-hundred, thirty, thirty-two.
It's also on the agenda, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry.
People on the phone don't have it.
So I, I work full-time with my most wonderful assistant, Ariel Mary. Um, she does ninety-five percent of my assistant hours, which I have three hundred and seventy-five. Probably getting ready for the last year to handle that. I'm definitely in need of more assistance. Um, from Mary, of course. Um, we're seeing a, a lot of people, um, the, just our food pantry alone, I'm, I use, I'm use the food pantry for most of this because that's the program that I have the most participants in. We just registered our two hundred and first household for this fiscal year, which is this, not even, what is it, we're seven months into our fiscal year, our highest since I've been here in the last five years was two hundred and ten, and that was to two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, in the, in when COVID began. So I really think we're probably going to be close to two hundred and fifty by the end of this fiscal year. Um, and it's not only myself, the food pantry, out of those participants that are registered, the food pantry is seeing a hundred and twenty-five households on a regular basis, maybe not every other week when they operate, but regularly, whereas it was about sixty last fiscal year. So that's doubling. Um, I've had sixty-four households, this is the most I've seen, that are brand new to this program without any other social service help this fiscal year. And like I said, we're only seven months into it. So that was a big surprise to me, that we have sixty-four new households. And it gives me an opportunity, I love when they come, because it gives me an opportunity to talk to them about other resources that we have in town. So um, I broke down the, the um households, so we have two hundred and one households that um consist of four hundred and seventy-four individuals. Hundred and fifty-one of those individuals are children, and a hundred and thirteen are seniors. The remainder are adults aged eighteen to sixty-five. Somebody asked about um the breakdown of the households. I did it based on on a hundred and ninety-four, I didn't count, and a hundred and ninety-six, I didn't count the last five that registered. But we have um eighty-three of those households are single-person households, and twenty-five are homeowners, a hundred and thirty-five are renters, and thirty-six reside with family. So they're adult children. Most of them uh reside with a parent or their parents. Brotherhood in Action is another entity in town. I'm super fortunate, we have um, that, that's run by volunteers, and so is the community food pantry. The Brotherhood in Action, when I started in two thousand seventeen, Thanksgiving, um, they provided a hundred and three baskets. This year, they provided a hundred and forty-six baskets. For Christmas in two thousand seventeen, a hundred and twenty-seven, it went up to a hundred and seventy-one um this year. And it's not because of me, it's just because the need in, in the, you know, in the town, everyone's feeling it. I'm also seeing an increase in seniors that are coming to me, and they're saying, Megan, I never, we saved for retirement, I never speculated that I would need any kind of assistance whatsoever. I'm coming to because I need help. We don't know what we're gonna do. So, and those um seniors are homeowners. So, um, you know, we just connect them to property tax and different resources that could help them. Um, so back to schools is the same, we had a hundred and nine children. We usually have between ninety and a hundred and fifteen. Um, the cost for the program was sixteen thousand three hundred and fifty approximately, and I have to say, our sound is awesome. There was no funding from the taxpayers, used for that was all based on donation. Same with the holiday gift giving, it was um, we had ninety-one children, it was approximately eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Um, each child's cost is about a hundred and twenty per child. They uh get the gifts and gift cards and different things. Um, that was all based on, on um donations as well. Um, I did apply, every year I applied for the giving fund, which is through United Way. Um, this year I submitted ten stories, each one was fully funded. And we got six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. This year was the quickest that it was spent on those ten families who had submitted stories for it. They knew right away what they wanted to pay. Um, someone went to pay three months' bills for this oil, some gal had three medical bills that were bothering her that she had, that she couldn't pay. We have gift cards that some people wanted, um, car taxes back three years for, for one gal. Six of those people were seniors. It was, it was a great, great time to, to help them, right, Mary? Um, home, the visits, I had two hundred and four central visits between July first and February ninth of this year. Um, today. And then that doesn't include people that just stopped in to, to, to have a question or to see me that didn't have an appointment. I did nineteen home visits. Laura and I have seen um a great increase in social needs in this community. It is just, uh, we're getting referrals from the police department, from the first responders, from neighbors, from family members. And the home visits are really definitely taking a lot more of my time than they had before. I do have to have somebody with me. Mary usually comes. I borrow people from other departments that are like inappropriate enough fit. Laura and I team up and do most of the home visits together. Um, but it's, it's a lot. It's um people that have mental, uh, mental illness that a family member is concerned about them, or there are multiple people in the family that people are concerned. But we're mostly seeing, um, and we're so good that she really wants to bring something to Bethel to do education. But we're seeing a lot of people that have a lot of clutter. I would say hoarding. It's, it's uh so much so that one of the families in EMT could not get the gentleman back in the house. So we, we paid him hotel stays and I'm trying to help them work with the families to get back. So that's prob- that's really a reason that I'm gonna, this might be the last chair, that I'm, I can't justify having a, a part-time person helping me. But I'm looking, definitely gonna be looking for more hours to, um, to help, because it's like, sometimes it's like such a crunch for me. We only had five evictions in twenty-one, twenty-two. I thought that we would have more. Um, but we didn't. And the one per- there was only one person that, that required storage of their items to date from July first. We've only had one eviction, and I'm not sure why the numbers are going down. I know that agencies like the um Community Action Agency are really trying to help people with um emergency situations. That may be what is helping people stay in their, their apartments and their homes longer.
It could be some of the COVID um restrictions.
Yeah, but that stopped, that stops. I really thought I would see a lot more. I thought there were, I was gonna be inundated. That's why I had asked
Yeah, right.
For, for more money. Sorry, I try not to be nervous. I just. The Community Action Agency of Western Connecticut. So they're funded through the state of Connecticut, and they provide all the energy assistance to the local towns, the home surrounded towns. They have a lot of programs that um also have emergency funds for people when they have the funding available, and there were quite a few, probably, excepted Bethel residents that utilize that to, you know, month after month, help them just get through. They, they initially wanted people that suffered from COVID um or had that experience, um, but now they're really helping anyone that they can. So to my surprise, I don't know what's gonna happen. That is a big expense when we do have evictions, but um we haven't. So I, what did I do? I don't even know. I went down. Um, no, it went up at profits expense by two hundred dollars because ink is, toner is so costly. So, and I do print out, you see my little giving trees and everything around town. So I do print out a lot of stuff. Do some education, I went down. I, I probably won't even um utilize that. I don't, but I went down to two hundred. Myology expense, yeah, you know, it's just Bethel. So I requested a hundred again. I did go down um to two thousand dollars for the Bethel Emergency Fund. I find like I am utilizing the um, the Bethel funding that we have first and foremost, and then I would rely on that because there are so many people that donate money. So we try to use that for emergency-only situations. I am definitely a stickler about it. If there's an agency that can help them, then I want them to use those resources first. Um, non-government organizations, we did give out nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars out of the twenty thousand last year. I'm requesting that again, and we will um distribute that. And for victims' storage, I did go down a thousand because I have no idea, but I don't want to ask for that much if I'm not gonna utilize it. Megan, a question.
Megan, uh, under your mercy, but the, the reduction of two thousand dollars.
Yes.
Now, it, it's with the times the way they are right now, two thousand dollars doesn't go very far.
No, it doesn't.
I'd really like to see it to, to go back to the four, and if you don't use it, but.
Okay, we can do that, yeah.
Well.
I can't write you the check. A little donation would be nice.
Send out to Asian. Get help from other agencies.
And her budget rich in twenty-twenty-two was two thousand?
Yeah.
She thought there was gonna be this big pulling of the invictions and all the other. And it is, so I think that's why she bumped it up to four.
It back down because I really do. Listen, I am, I utilize myself and Mary as much as possible to get people connected to resources so that I'm not utilizing funds for that. Because the state, the government funds so many agencies, and they're, they're so helpful. And even um, who, who's one, but I never met him, but I talked to him on the phone. Um, he's so wonderful. He's with Homefront. And six people, I, five or six people I referred this year to Homefront. So they'll have um purchases done, or their rooms are, and like emergency situations or urgent situations. Yeah.
You can breathe now.
Go great.
You could stress it all day. She woke up to it on my side. Bob, man, free then, you have anything?
No, I'm, I'm good, Nick. Thank you, and, and thanks, Megan.
Okay.
How about you, Brian? Uh, Brian, are you with us? Thank you, Brian. Anybody else on my side?
Megan, you're the best.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you, Megan. For all your hard work.
Thank you, Rich. I'll keep a present for next year.
Sorry, no more.
All right, Chris.
I'm Chris Paulman, building official for the town. And first and foremost, like.
About twenty-one eighty.
Thank you. Twenty dash, twenty.
Twenty dash one.
Twenty dash.
Twenty dash one, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, while you're turning, is wondering, ten is general government, twenty is public safety, thirty, social services and health, forty, public works.
Yeah.
Fifty is debt, yeah.
I'm just killing time.
Yeah, we're good.
John's in charge of the jokes.
He'll be all right. I try to be.
Yeah, make sure you definitely try to protect.
First and foremost, I want to thank the first selectmen and the other selectmen's um, and also the board of finance, because um your support for the building department has been very helpful. I noticed a huge difference in the department and the efficiency of what we can get done. So uh, thank you to the board of finance and the board of selectmen. Um, basically, it's short and simple. Um, there is going to be salary increases um based on contractual arrangements. But I have no increases. I'm keeping everything level and the same. So, um, that's pretty much, pretty much it. Um, I'm projecting about three hundred and fifty thousand for the department to bring in for the funding and so forth, and um, the economy still seems to be moving along well. Uh, we're still seeing the permits coming in. Um, a little slow up in residential, but mostly commercials really hit that recently. So that's what we see trending on. Is there any questions?
What was your income last year? Four seventy-six.
Thank you, Brad.
That's building and zoning, but most of that is, is all English.
Yeah.
Chris, was it last year that you guys implemented a new computer system? We had money in there for that, the last year?
Yes, so we've been working on a computer system actually for a couple of years now. Um, the building department is basically at the point where we're, for the most part, paperless. Uh, we've got a system in place where there's better communication. People can apply online. Um, in the system, we have all the permits that come through. We have what are called dashboards. With these dashboards, we can go through, and I can ask the building official look at what's going on within the department. If something's sitting for too long, I could, I can address it and, and make sure it gets taken care of. So there's better communication all around. And then the attempt is also to communicate to other departments so that they also have, or we have a way, say, for instance, something comes in, and it comes to us a little early, but we need other departmental approvals. We can shoot out information to those other department selectmen, know, give them the heads up. So it's really improving things within the department.
It was a good investment.
What's that?
It was a good investment.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. Oh, yeah, it benefits the town, it benefits uh the applicants, and it really streamlines the process.
And also they, they clean out their office, so that everything's been uh digitalized, and yeah, everything's online.
Yeah, if I seem stressed, there's, I'm just one few balls here. Yeah, we, we are in the process of digitizing all the records. Those records would be available to the public, so that instead of coming into the office, if you want to look at, you know, your property files and so forth, you can do so.
Just quick, courtesy, um, I noticed they, they have lease payments on a vehicle here, not that much left, but was there any consideration?
So on the capital plan, um, we're not focused on it, because they have people talk about their twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yep.
And twenty-four, twenty-five is buying out the lease that vehicle.
Beautiful, thank you.
Um, and then at some point, we're gonna have to replace the two thousand and seventy Chevy Trailblazer. Chris put it on for this year, but he talked them into next year.
Right.
We also, Bob, Brian?
Nothing for me, and thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Right.
That's okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, everyone. I'm Laura of the SEAL to direct. I have tried to keep this as lean as possible as I always do for you and us and our town. Um, I have uh two asks. The Minicity software that you purchased uh was designed for building, but we have developing it for health. And so we've been working uh triple time doing that. And my, a line item under salaries, which would be in.
And my a line item under salaries, which would be in on three fifty, five oh one. Was part-time hours to help us continue and finalize. Online health department services that integrate with zoning. And the public works and the building department. And like Chris said, everyone can be on that dashboard and track things. So in you know that in the beginning, whenever you're doing something new. It takes some pain and time and effort to get to the reward end. So um this onboarding and this hours is to uh it takes about um. Forty minutes right now to an hour to do the application and we're working with the company to get that at a much faster rate. Cause per applications and things, we try to go as fast as possible. So that's what that ask is for. I I uh we all worked on the laser fish. It's gonna be an asset. For people to see their stuff online and it's gonna be a real asset for them to be able to do online public health. And though it'll be a first in our state and uh there's just a kink, a big one, but there's a kink. As soon as that is uh rectified, we'll get out with our first application with your support. So that's with that um that hours of assistance and the billing. There's billing so you can see the revenue generated um. About fifty percent, maybe less of our services do have a revenue. And you'll see that on Minicity and you see that with Brad now.
And Laura, because we've talked a lot about this, I just don't want you to miss this point.
Thank you.
It's not that person that is in there now part-time because they had a full-time vacancy that they're working to fill. Um, they're not just doing Minicity stuff. They're also covering the office. Because as the main admin has been here longer, they get more vacation time. So that, you know, instead of having. Laura or her assistant on the desk. Um, she's trying to actually use.
So they could, if you look and I put this online so you can see it. Twenty-seven, thirty days out of the year in a health department salon. So if I'm in the front, I'm not doing the service output. And and it slows it down. So the that support up front actually empowers us to. Uh, do more in a higher technical level. Thank you for that, Brad. I we really were very thoughtful about that. It improves the billing. Uh, I'm very proud of the town. They're going to allow people to have the option. Whether they wanna pay online or coming and options are always really appreciated by residents. Another thing that I did say to Brad, so Brad hears it more than you is most of my budget is mandated. It is our legal obligations under the law. And um I was taught that for every dollar that you spend on us, you make two dollars. Uh, and so every partner who comes to visit you, we work with and we try to support in health. Well-being infectious disease. Um, last year, someone asked would we put the grants that we have received. To try to support different um community players online and we put those funds up. I'm very proud of the work and Brad does help with that and some remarkable work has been done. The other ask is in three fifty, three one three. Um, the town of Bethel always had twenty thousand to forty thousand dollars. In our public health nursing monies on the side way before Laura Visio. Way before if Mr. English was here or uh someone else, they would tell you that was there. And we always did our infectious disease or tuberculosis whenever our rec uh reportable disease were. Required by law and we got that done. Um, it's been an interesting time. We see it lots. I don't wanna be an alarmist, but we are tracking a little more tuberculosis. And we're uh tracking some different, you know, MPOX virus now they're thinking in the summer. Could increase and uh people working with us with Megan have done a remarkable job. And when we keep them working and their that their business doesn't have an outbreak. It's a financial gain all the way around and that's what I meant for a dollar to do. Um, I don't say this to scare you, but I told you a couple of years ago. One of my colleagues have a non-compliant infectious disease TB case. And uh it's very important that we work with people and help them and we like to do it cooperatively. But we are responsible to quarantine them till their meds are done. So that cost a jurisdiction seventy-five thousand dollars twelve years ago. So and that's a statute. So whenever I can work with all the colleagues and partners. And we can get where we need to go and keep everybody safe. It's an asset. So I always feel bad asking for things, but that is uh the needs that we need. And I told my uh Brad that this is an average. Like Megan, sometimes we've had some really complicated um cases. And uh as you all know, Megan is a tremendous asset and what happens in the senior center. And uh library, uh everybody gets affected, honest or partner, and what I call them, they call me. But some of these cases, if every case that was told to be removed from their home, you had to cover their costs. You would have paid out eleven thirty, forty-five thousand dollars this past year. So every time Megan and I can get it under control. And we can get them safe and in a medically sound state, it's an asset to us. So that's um, that's what I wanted to present to you.
And just to, as uh Laura, we went back and forth a lot about putting in a higher number in this contracted. But we're trying to balance out, not best case, because we're not trying to be crazy and go, nobody's gonna get sick. Um, so we're just trying to hit that average and we know that if there's more cases, she's gonna come back and report and go. We needed more.
Yeah. Um, you know, I was part of the thirteen dollar reduction. I put in there last year trying to be transparent that we only use seven thousand. So even way before me for like forty years. That money sat and then Brad sees the bills. They only go out if we have the things that have to be done. If we, if they don't have to be done, then that stays. And I have a very good, or I shot very hard to have a good rent.
And the revenue?
Oh, yes. I uh we were only, I'm very proud of this because. Um, we did a pandemic for two years, seven days a week. And um we uh our revenue was sixty-seven, five ninety-nine, eighty-five. And I have, I do not know and I don't wanna bother uh Brad, why the eighty-five cents? But sixty-seven, five ninety-nine, eighty-five.
We're gonna make a five.
Well, see, we, the part of Minicity, uh, he will. And I don't wanna, I'm very proud of our town because and the businesses, the community, the residents. Last the year before, we made seventy-one, one thirty-two and ninety cents. That meant that we held together during a pandemic. I mean, I I, you know. Because and it's it's true that we are doing a lot of recovery and I did have a little leeway. To help restaurants and some businesses that were struggling with the board of selectmen during that time. But you know, those numbers during that period, I think show that were strong and I hope that. Park and Rec is right and just continue. Plus you keep adding things and then I need more staff to do it.
The uh thirteen thousand for the increased public health nursing. Which mandate is that?
Uh, it's when you go up on open dot com. I put, we deliberated. I don't usually, because it's all confidential. I put up the lead mandate.
Okay.
For you, so you could see the blood lead uh tracking that we do, the sheet that I received. And then I put the reportable diseases that we do right up there so you could see. I'm proud of the Northeast. It's the last place where they still keep it in confidential. And then so people could keep their, you know, it's just them and the doctors and the health staff when something happens. Because once we resolve it and everybody's okay, we're done. It ends, we move on.
Brad, the the part-time person, then there's no better for that person.
Correct. Yeah. Bob Manfredo?
Thanks, Nick. Yeah, uh, maybe just following up on what Richard just asked. Um, one more question deep, I guess. For the twenty thousand eight hundred, how many hours is that? I'm just curious.
Oh, I uh, well, it's the nurse, the nurses get forty-two an hour. So it the, so you could justify it. At times it's been one sixty-six of the four seventy-six.
It's twenty dollars. Twenty hours a week. We didn't cut that yet.
I got it. So so Brad, twenty, twenty dollars an hour, twenty hours a week. For the twenty thousand eight hundred. And then Laura, you were saying for the thirteen thousand. For the nurse, that's forty dollars an hour?
No, I didn't need to confuse you. So the the uh that twenty thousand that they always have allocated. The nurses get forty-two an hour. And then it's how they're, they work for by hours. So, dear Brad. So whatever happened that week, whatever's going on, they do the blood lab that they have to track. And they then they do whatever uh read a hundred reportable diseases are coming.
Are we talking about?
If I do the math, yeah, yeah, Nick. If I do the math, to to next point, it's under contracted services. I'm just looking at the budget book. It talks about of of the twenty thousand increase, thirteen is for the the nurse. Or nursing. And so if it's thirteen thousand at forty-two per hour. That's about three hundred and ten hours. Is is that sound right?
Yeah, it's exactly what we did.
Okay.
And it's as needed. So there's not like they work twenty hours a week. It's not, you know. Right, yeah.
Right. So uh if if we're lucky, it's less. If we get another pandemic, we get more.
So it's like a tuberculosis case.
Yeah.
A fungal situation, which I hope now in one of our long-term care. Um, then we we go ahead.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Laura.
I have a question. Um, was that with the building department, the computer program, was that um from the originally a collaborative project or?
Always.
Okay.
It the only software that exists in the country is building software. Taking.
And so you're kind of customizing it?
We have no choice. The the public health and and medical system is like a, you know, it's uh it's a skill on its own like Izzy. Software. So it has to be developed for the laws. To cover us and to uh capture what it needs to capture. So everything you do with me. Uh, we're audited and we I do a about three hundred and seventy-five page report to the commissioner each year. And they can walk in anytime and double check.
Yeah, I was I was curious why. I just didn't know that.
Oh, oh, no, it's all integral.
Right, that's all I'm asking.
And it was rolled out the building first, because obviously that's what it's built for.
Right.
Twelve to eighteen months.
Yeah.
Got Chris to a certain point with building and then we added planning and zoning as a piece, yes, a piece. And public works also uses the same. It's not quite, but it's they use Minicity as well.
Brian, are you with us? Anything?
He's still good.
Should we do a welfare check? Uh, so Brad's going to the selectman budget, correct?
Yeah. Do we wanna, do you want me up there?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
First off, it's worth saying, how's everybody doing? Do we need a five minute?
Uh, people on the Zoom, I'm sorry for the reflection coming off the back of my head. I forgot my agenda, but all right, ten one hundred selectmen's budget.
Um, what was ten again?
We're getting about eight forty, eight forty-four before we get punched. All right. The only change is the salaries. Um, for our financing increase, first selectman salary last year. That makes up like five thousand of it. Um, the. And then there's been just some other adjustments at the first like, there's no union positions in this account. So. Any questions about the selectmen budget?
Um, and and again, the two and a half employees are, there's none of them in the union there?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's the first selectman, the two selectmen come out of here.
Yeah.
Um, you have the office administrator. Um, the HR director, which is part-time position. Um, EDC coordinator, which is a full-time position, but is half paid by the uh EDC, half paid by the town.
So the the first selectman sent set those last year then?
Yes, that's what the first selectman sets all uh non-union employees. And the board of finance obviously sets first cycle and the selectmen.
Don't get crazy.
Ten thousand five hundred and fourteen merit increase cover. Is that the two and a half? That's a merit increase rate.
It's uh cost of living, it's merit.
Contractual, but that covers the two and a half full-time.
Yeah, which includes our first selectman as part of the two and a half full-time. So it's, yeah.
Does that is our part-time employees receiving increases as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody gets.
Yes. Except for the selectmen, and you're welcome, Rich. I threw that in there for you.
What are the salaries?
One oh nine, something for the first selectman, one oh nine six, I believe.
Okay.
Uh, treasure. Uh, board of finance, that's the salary. The only thing in this budget is the salary of the board of finance. Any questions?
We're cutting out.
Yeah.
Uh, controller's office. Um, and I assume Bob and Brian will just jump in if they have any questions.
Yeah, you know what I did? I did. Bob Manfredo, are we going too fast? Are you all good?
Very good. Thank you.
Brian?
Um, so the salaries for the controllers office is down. We used to have. Five full-time employees. We have four now. Um, you will see it. I did put a note in here. Um, we did increase, I thought I put it on here, that um. Initially, I was gonna put in contract and services and amount in here. Um, for uh payroll uh software to track payroll. Um, as Dan will learn later this week, if you fill out your timesheet, it'll be by paper. And that is ridiculous in twenty twenty-three.
So you've never done any with a payroll service?
We've looked at it.
The thing hadn't worked out, right? The ones that you tried.
Yeah, we went way too far down the line and somebody to find out that we didn't trust them. I didn't trust them. I shouldn't say we, I didn't trust them. Um, it's still on the table. It's, you know, there's been other stuff going on, but. Um, so that I, instead of being in the controller's budget, all that software cost is in IT. So I put it in there. Um, we probably won't have something like that for July. Um, but I also know IT has a server that they're needed, you know. It gives us more flexibility in IT if we don't do it. Um, because there are needs in there. And we try to run it tight without having to run to the boards for eighteen thousand, twenty thousand dollar server.
I think what I'm hearing is you're just hiding money around a little bit, is that?
And auditing is up. Uh, auditing, I estimated last year three percent. And then they told us it's six percent. So I'm budgeting three percent again. Um, because I think we're gonna have to push back on if they go above the three. Since we don't currently have an audit. And then some of the Jews in education are up. Office expenses up because supplies cost more. Jews in education is up. We do have some newer employees in our office too that we're. Trying to get up and on. Any questions on controller?
Shouldn't they talk about mileage expense?
It's thirty percentage wise it is. The IRS. Used to, I don't remember what it was last year, but it's like sixty-five cents a mile right now. So it's not necessarily more miles. It's the IRS is reimbursing higher. So.
Did you? Yeah, are you down one person um purposefully or?
Yeah, so um Sebby and I. Yeah, so um Sebby and I talked about it. We had a retirement. We shuffled some things around. And frankly, we're just doing more with less.
Great job. You got a great assistant, obviously. I mean, that's. Um Bob, Brian?
Nothing from me, Nick. Thank you. Agree with the comment that Brad's doing a great job.
Now I need to get my agenda, I think. Ten one sixty. So going into fiscal year twenty three budget, we had three contracts that were. Um for the library. Um one has been settled, officially settled, voted on, it's done. Uh another one of the contracts we have a P A on and the board of selectmen are meeting in a couple of weeks on to. Most likely approve, I would assume. Um and we still the two outstanding. Um but we bumped it up last year because we had all the contracts up. We have less contracts up, so it's coming back down. Legal, we bumped up the last couple of years to try to get it to where the actuals have been running. Again, we base this on averages because you never know in a given year. The two thirty is right now based on the averages. I think it's a good spot, so I left it alone. Um and claim settlement is down. One of our settlements ended. In this fiscal year, so it's a decrease. The other one, there's a note in here, ends in twenty twenty seven. So that eleven thousand one eighty will be the budgeted number until the end of twenty twenty seven.
Quick question we face, um does that include all your physically land use, everything?
Mister Manfredo?
I'm good. Thank you.
Probate court we're not doing because, you know, I wanted to be able to present two different nights and not because I forgot to put it on the agenda for tonight. So we'll do that Tuesday night. Just a little background on what's happened in this account. So we currently have two full time people in I T. We had one full timer and one part timer in the current year budget twenty twenty three. Arpa funds were approved to increase the part timer to full time. That covered fiscal year twenty three. So some of the salary increase is pretty much from going from part time to full time. And some of it is the network administrator was bumped up. Uh in part because we used to have the board of ed. Um their employee was the supervisor of this department. That agreement has ended. So we used to pay the board of ed twenty five thousand dollars for that service. We no longer pay it, so it's no longer budgeted. Uh contracted services is up thirty six thousand, twenty five thousand of which is for. The budget from that I thought about putting in the controller's office and realized it belonged more in I T. Um so that actually looks like a much bigger increase than it would be, but the payroll software should be twenty to twenty five thousand dollars when we do it.
I thought we share an I T person with the schools.
That the I T person from the the main I T person from the schools was the supervisor for the town I T person. So it wasn't necessarily shared. It was.
How's the word?
Yeah, they mostly say it. So it was shared early on because ten years, twelve years ago, when our I T network administrator was hired. It was shared. The board of that person did more and as our person has grown. Our person, the Nick Catal, that was our network administrator. Handles all of our I T needs at this point. And now the part, the full time person that works underneath them is trying to do, help us take kids. This meeting has to get converted and put it on YouTube, all that stuff. So Nick's grown to the point that we don't need that supervisor anymore, is the short answer.
You know, I understand right that we used to, we use that supervisor, but we had a funded board of ed twenty five thousand. So where did that money come from? It offset the the forty three in in salaries here.
Yeah, so if you look at line five three oh six, professional services. It was budgeted for twenty five thousand now it's here.
Okay, so so it we lost it there, but we we took it on another line. So it's not as bad as what it looks.
And one of the reasons that we've used. The Arpa funds, because normally I don't like to make like a clip with that kind of stuff, is we knew this twenty five was going away. We informed the board of ed. In June of twenty twenty two. Fiscal year twenty three is the last year we're paying for that person, part of that person's salary.
Because we're not using them and now we're not.
Yes, we still use the person, but the need was. Our needs just changed, really. Any questions on data processing, even though I changed?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, I I just wasn't following the thread. On going to two full time employees and covering it through Arpa. I and maybe others remember this, and if you all do. Then let's stop the discussion and I'll go offline with Brad, not to waste your all's time. But I I don't remember that. I don't re- I don't remember. Somebody saying, oh, we're gonna hire a second person and pay for it with Arpa funds. So uh again, I'm sorry if it's just me, but could you?
So um the Arpa funds are controlled by the board of selectmen. The first selectman made the request to the board of selectmen to increase that position. It was increased. Frankly, some of the conversations I had with Matt Nickerbacker at the time was. If you use Arpa funds for it, you would create a cliff. But I knew that we were ending this supervision piece. That covered a good chunk of it going forward. So and without going to two full time people, we probably wouldn't have. Ness it was all done in coordination. We probably would have kept the board of I supervisor twenty five thousand. Just because you need somebody capable of backing up. When somebody's on vacation or a sector, you know.
Okay, so i- if I'm understanding it, that's that's a question, right? But if I'm understanding it. A hire was made. On the basis that it was gonna be paid for out of Arpa funds, despite the fact that. The salary aspects of this are to be approved by the board of finance.
I think.
Brad, I think it's important, but you blessed it because you knew the shelf wasn't coming, the twenty five was coming back.
But here's my, what's the salary of the first of what was the delta in the salary that they were getting and? And you put somebody part time to full time, right?
Yeah, so when we looked at. The part time person we had at the time went full time. The different increase in hours was twenty, it worked out to be twenty five thousand dollars. Obviously, I understand there's also benefits and stuff like that. There's other costs. But when it came just to count ten one ninety. The twenty five thousand dollars that we were paying the board of ed, not paying that anymore, covered the increase from part time to full time.
But now is that person, that person is not a, it's not a contract with union.
It's a union employee.
Okay, so that's gonna result in union negotiation and it's a three year contract?
Yes, yeah, that their salary was negotiated as part of the.
So it it's gonna increase over time.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, we won't, for example, next year, I know we're we're dealing with fiscal year. Twenty four, right? But in fiscal year twenty five, there's going to be an increase that will not be offset in part. By the twenty five thousand.
That is correct.
I maybe note note to board, uh this might be a. Process issue or a process discussion. I. The again, this is the first I recall it or first I'm hearing about it. Doesn't strike me well, and maybe it's just me. Uh but I I guess enough for tonight.
You, I mean, it's it's something that is a little bit outside of the scope that I understand the logic behind it, but it's just. You know, we generally, it's it's the biggest question we ask as a board of finance is about new head uh head counts. So to think that i- and you wouldn't mention it, it just seemed, I I would bob on this.
I think I think it, they felt they didn't need to say it because they were paying the first year of COVID money. But soon as the COVID money goes away, now it's our problem. I I I see your point, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
But not to kill it, I'm sorry about your thing.
I just quick back to salaries. It we so basically we're taking out the twenty five thousand from the forty three and change. It's still an eighteen percent increase without adding, and we're not adding more.
Yeah, because some of it was. Increase in salaries, the hard timer got a decrease, so it's offsetting twenty five of it, but. It's not to now it's a union position to Cynthia's point. They got a raise, they got a raise seven one, they got a raise, they're gonna get a set raise seven one twenty three. There's a step in there.
So that's nineteen thousand.
The non-union employee also got a raise for now being in department. For better or worse.
So one of the parts, so one of the full timers went to a department head. So got a salary increase. Becoming a department head. And then the other one, because they went to a contract.
It's one full time employee at almost half the salary because the twenty five had come back, but not next year. No, the twenty five, we were paying the board of bed every year. We were paying for the I T. We were sharing the I T. That was twenty five thousand. Now, I know that employee plus more than twenty five, but the twenty five always needs to come off the number if we were always spending or anticipating spending it.
And it was just the flat fee that we paid the board of it.
The twenty five helps the full time, but it's it's.
So do we need to add more legal fees when we, you know?
Ten to twenty. Insurance. Workers' compensation. So we got our notice for. Uh new rates for twenty twenty three from Kerma, who's our carrier and workers' comp, uh they reduce our worker shop. That's two years in a row. We've done a lot of work with trainings and other stuff. Done reducing that, so. So the nice thing is workers' comp decreased less than liability, property and liability. Property liability at this point, our carrier says max it'll be is three percent. We will keep talking to them as we get closer to the end of the year, but at this point. They guarantee that it will not. We had a cap on it anyway. They couldn't go up. We're near two or three of a three year cap. We're still hopeful it goes down. The reason it's up more than the three percent. Is the town also buys flood insurance. We buy cyber insurance. Cyber insurance is very hard to get. Un- unfortunately, with what's going on in the world, it's very necessary. So because our carriers, most carriers do not want to carry cyber insurance. And the latest renewal on that went from like twenty two thousand to twenty seven thousand. And honestly, at twenty seven thousand dollars, we hope. We go, well, we bought it. We didn't need it. You know. But it doesn't take much. For you get hacked.
You good, Robert?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Boards and commission. Uh the only change here is where because of COVID, we're way overdue for charter revision. Speaking to then acting first electman, Richard Strayton. We said we should do it. I spoke to Dan about it earlier, just maybe yesterday. The days are blending together. And we said, yeah, it it was time for us to do it. The fifteen might not get us all the way there, but. Uh it might be more than a year long process anyway. Um I think last time and we got pretty far along, we spent like ten to twelve. So the fifteen, depending on if they take up from where the last one left off or just start anew. Fifteen might be enough. It might be too much. It might not be enough, but it's a fair offer.
Don't we do charter revision every five years?
We're supposed to, yes.
Do we just finish one two years ago?
No, because it got finished.
It was being reviewed every three years. So does that mean there's, so there you'll reopen the charter revisions?
It's up to the board of selectmen, but the thought is it's, they have the option.
Brad, can you just remind me what that fee is for? Is that legal fees?
The secretary money would be in the five one oh five, all the legal postings. You know, I knew, I think we pay an attorney too to do some of it. Um to do some of the work.
But news time advertisements.
Yeah, and we know how expensive that gets. I'll get Cynthia started on that.
The attorney was at every every meeting, but that comes out of another that legal fees.
Not not for the charter. Just to make it so when we look at it, go, how much does it cost the attorney revision?
I understand we 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 don't necessarily have to use a town attorney for that. We use any. There are a couple of people who do it now.
I believe so. Any questions on boards and information?
Robert? Still video, so I gotta.
Employee benefits. Like it's based on anticipated salaries. I will let you know now. I usually budget this with only a fraction of the potential new hires. So that because traditionally, we kind of have a sense of. We don't, every proposed new hire doesn't happen. So I try to budget this based on the currents and if every new hire that was proposed in this budget went through, we'd probably have to move like them. Hospitalization is up. This includes, right now, we're factoring, I believe I put in eight or eight and a half percent for employee medical. The state's right now saying eight to eleven was the last update on it. They are proposing some new programs that. Dan and I were talking about earlier today, um that we will look at. It I probably should have budgeted that line for ten. I like to be optimistic a little bit on this that. You know, they were initially at nine to twelve, so then they've come down to eight to eleven.
So is that a rate increase based on our usage or just in general?
It's the whole, it's a pool. So the state partnership plan is cool. And it's based on their experience as a whole.
Do you think that's COVID related and it may come down?
Last year, there was, they went with ten percent, I think, or ten and a half percent. Some of that was, they had really low claims during COVID, because anything remotely elective wasn't happening. And then those restrictions lifted a lot of the elect, but I think they're still catching up for some of that.
But the COVID hospitalizations went down, so.
Yeah, but a lot of the COVID stuff was covered by the federal.
Is that actually the best deal going or is it, because it's a partnership. I know it's I, it's a. A specific state thing, but are there other options?
There are other options. It has to be negotiated with the unions. And the language in there, you pretty much have to replace it with a plan. That was almost identical to, and when you try to build out a plan that's equal to that, it gets. Expensive, even more expensive. I should at some point run a history of what this count has been because. We used to be at like three million dollars four years ago. When we switched to the partnership plan initially, we saved a lot of money. And so, yeah, so. We're still probably. Without having it in front of me, below where we would have if we just like factored our old one up five percent a year. Um, which five percent is probably a fair number for health over some of those years. Um. But, yeah, it's if we get two straight years of ten. We're looking at other options, but the state. Is looking at different ways to adjust the plan.
Um.
Um. But we would have to address some of those things with the union, but it would be cheaper for the members to, so. Um. We are looking at it. Um. Police pension is up, that's just the actuary determined contribution. Um. Police officers is still an active pension. Um, so that means new hires are in the pension plan. Um, and that is just based on the actuaries. Um. The employee pension, the one point five million dollars in there is. Um, non police employees. New hires are on the defined contribution plan. Um, which is like in the private sector, it'd be a four one K. Um. So even though in the long term, that saves the town liability. In the short term, it's still more expensive. Because you you're paying out the person their piece right away. Whereas you're not factoring it twenty years from now when they retire. Um, but some of that is balancing now because. The active members in that plan has dropped way off. Um. Because obviously in the last six or seven years that we haven't added anybody to it, and we've had retirements. Um, so that's up. Fifteen thousand dollars. Um, unemployment, we don't budget for. The open piece, we don't budget for either.
How many of the V O E staff, how many of those folks from pensions?
Um. Only teachers at this point are new hires. Are in a pension, but there. They do have some employees that are in the town pension. Some of the office staff in the like fiscal office are, um. But again, that plan closed for new hires. Around the same time that the towns did. Um.
Sixteen ish.
Was it probably? Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
Any other questions?
Bob?
I'm good, thank you.
Uh, ten four oh five. Um. Most of these C C M, which is Connecticut Conference Municipalities. Uh, cost, which is the council of small towns, our membership dues that we pay, council elected officials. Are they, I think they're still going by West Cog?
Yeah.
Yeah, is West Cog. Um. Are mostly flat, West Cog went up a little bit. Um, and then the Memorial Day Veterans Assistance Improvement. Paramedic North, we're all keeping flat. Uh, the other changes in you here are you see are the heart bus and the sweetheart bus. Um, that is, uh, cost increase requested by heart. For the buses that they run. Um. I believe they kept it flat last year and this year they'll be a percent.
Do we get any feedback on the use of that?
Um, I think they give us a report every year, I don't know if you've ever seen it.
Okay.
So we could request it, though. Any questions on four oh five?
We can, Richard, just just kind of the. Okay, Brad, just on the paramedic intercept. How's that been trending?
Um. Last year, the program with this three hundred thousand funding. Um, reduced the outstanding debt by thirty thousand dollars. In fiscal year twenty three. We had to buy two new paramedic vehicles to the tune of like seventy thousand dollars. Um, so my guess is it's gonna be. A go above the three hundred. Um, the paramedic intercept, we should look at as a whole at another time. Um, because that. Is a complicated thing because both firehouses control the basic life support, which is your ambulances. Um, the and they have the licenses for the basic life support, advanced life support is. The license is held by the police department, which is the paramedic. So the intercept program is. Basic life support goes out in the ambulance, if they need advanced life support. The paramedic meets them at the scene. The if that person, if the paramedic needs to go in the ambulance, one of the people comes off the ambulance and drives the paramedic vehicle to the hospital. Um, the town gets reimbursed. When the paramedic goes on the ambulance, goes to the hospital. Uh, I believe last year, the reimbursement was like a hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, some of that's limited by what Medicare pays. Um. And private insurance, they all negotiated rates for it. Um, and the basic life support. Uh, the revenue from that close to the fire departments. Um. I think because it's a three hundred thousand dollar line item in the budget. And the board of finance slash board of selectmen haven't talked a lot about it lately, we have new members. We should probably at some point after the budget. Um, have the fire departments and police come in and just kind of talk about the program. Um. I know some board finance members have asked me about it. Um, we talked about it, but I think it's time that we just have a conversation with them. Not necessarily like. Looking to change anything, but let's understand it, it is a three hundred thousand dollar line item in the budget.
Are we, are we paying, um, we're paying Danbury for the actual paramedics?
Yes, so Newmans Hospital fills us for the paramedics.
Gotcha.
Um. They haven't contacted us yet, but through the police chief. Um, they're losing money.
And how much are we in the hole in that account? I know we.
Uh, it's like, we paid it down a hundred thousand last year through the year in transfers. Um, it was like three sixty, I think it's like three thirty, because the thirty thousand dollars. Um, that. We with to the, I don't want to call it to the good, because the general fund put three hundred thousand in.
Right, right.
To break even last year, we would have had to put in two seventy.
Yeah.
It's the way to, I guess.
What what is it, do you think we lose money on? Is it, is it just the number of calls that we have in there?
Some of it is just the. How you get reimbursed by there.
Right, yeah.
Um.
Medicare only pays the sort of, yeah. Um, you gotta argue with the insurance companies.
So. Um.
Do we, do we, do we, do we bill the person that's been transferred for?
Yeah, so there is a billing company.
Yeah.
That bills the person, they sign them the collections, they deal with Medicare, they do all that stuff.
Yeah.
Um. And then all the money goes to the firehouses. And then the firehouse has cut us checks. Um, as part of our year in audit. Last year, the year before. We did look at it, um, just because it's a revenue line item. In that fund. Um, they. And we're getting from the fire departments what we're supposed to be, so it's not a question of. What's going on that way, it's a question of, is there a better way to do this?
Right.
Show them a conversation, so yeah.
Yeah, make sure everybody knows what we're doing.
You know, so to your point, they, the paramedic fund, because it's its own fund. Ours the town three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You know, and that most likely will grow this year because we had to buy two vehicles. Um, and Reading. Who we share the paramedic program with, will pay a portion of those vehicles based on call volume.
But we're still three thirty and all.
Yeah.
Yeah, even with Reading's money, right?
Yeah.
We'll have that discussion later, you know.
Yeah, it's.
It's a big discussion that's been out there for a long.
Yeah. So, like I said, we have a lot of new board members that they give me goodness.
Will, did you have a question on?
Oh, you want to talk about the better?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I think it pays for the flags on better estate for the senators.
Bob, Brian?
I I look forward to the discussion that we're gonna have in the future around the paramedic answer, it's it's a big number. Um, I think it's probably one of the line items that we are least comfortable with, with our understanding. And we we said it every year in a big number and we kind of hold our breath, hoping that that number will be sufficient. So, uh, I I I do think, uh, it sounds like Nick is on board, I I do think it's a a good discussion to have in the future. So, so thank you.
Definitely, thank you, Bob. Brian, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm with you, I'm good. Thanks, Nick.
Uh, ten four ten, utilities charges. Um. I think everybody anticipated this number being ugly. Percentage wise. Um, and real dollars. Um. Gasoline is up forty five percent. I think everybody sees that at the top. Uh, we are locked in for. I think six months into the next year, just through July, we're in. Through June thirtieth, so we are continuing to look at it. Um, prices have come down a little bit from where they were a couple of months ago. Uh, we will continue to look at it. Um, and that's gasoline, it also includes diesel. Um. Yeah. So, um. Utilities. We are lucky that this number is not worse, to be honest with you. Our electric rate is locked up for at least two more years. Um, otherwise, this would be a much bigger number.
Yeah.
The bulk of what makes this up, the hundred and eighty thousand of the two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, natural gas. We were paying like sixty three cents a therm last time we were locked in, we're currently locked in at like one eighty. I was way off. Um, and just as a point of fact. Seventy percent of our natural gas bills.
It's for the school.
Is for the school. So it's an, it's a cost that's. For running our schools. That is in the town side. So. And streetlights are based on prior year actuals eighty nine, Sevi and our purchasing agent ran through all the bills. Um. Based on what they've been trying, we were guessing it's gonna be eighty three. Any questions on utilities other than please?
Brian? Guys?
All good.
You learn?
I'm good.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome, Nick.
Uh, ten four twenty miscellaneous charges and transfers. Um. Town hall expense, I bumped up twenty five hundred dollars. Mainly because we've always been buying the capital equipment that used to be its online. At a town hall expense and not separating it out. So all I did was move it from one spot to another. Um, because really, that's where we've been paying it out of anyway. It seems silly that it was its own line. Um. And if you want to know what they kept, it's chairs for this room, which we're getting short on. They break these, we probably replaced those chairs six or seven years ago. Um. So. And I think pretty much we're holding town hall expense flat. Uh, by doing the move, um, and I think we're in a good spot with it. Uh, last year was thirty five five. Some years it's fifty, so I mean, you know, it all depends on what's going on, and then that's where. Cynthia cover years, legal postings come out of, as well as. Top year paper as well, you know? Um. And wage adjustments. Is a decrease. Uh. It's pretty much because it's, we have. The police contract's still outstanding. I budgeted D P W. Based on the T A, so assuming the board of selectmen approve that. Um, in a couple of weeks, that's actually in their departments now, so you'll see that. Next Thursday night when Public Works presents, so it's two years of the police increases. Um, and the dispatch contract expires six thirty twenty three. So it's one year of dispatch plus non union. Plus elected. Um. So.
Save the best for last.
All right, we jump towards the end. Debt service. One just question?
Bobby, you with us?
Yeah, I am, no, I'm good, I'm sorry, I think I messed up where I was on mute or off mute.
The head blinded him for a second, he lost it. All right, uh, debt service. Um. If you just look at what the budget request is, it's a decrease of thirty eight thousand dollars. Um. That's for, um. Everybody that was on the board last year, well, I know you're new, but the chart on the next page right behind it. Um. Shows that we had in the debt service fund. Three point seven million dollars. Um, last year, I proposed the plan. To draw that three point seven down to six hundred thousand over seven years. Um, doing so to try to level off our debt for a couple of years. Um, fiscally, you're twenty three. Without using the debt service fund, our budget would have been six point eight million dollars. Um. With using it, it brought it down to five, five million four fifty five. Um, we use one point three million dollars last year. This year, I'm proposing we use six hundred and fifty two thousand, which pretty much keeps it flat. Um. So that's what brings us down a little bit. Um. So, I think. The my seven year plan, year two, um, I don't see any reason to change it at this point. Um, when we finish the audits of the two school projects. If more money comes into this account, we will adjust it. If we go out and bond stuff. And our debt's increasing over time, we may readjust it. So, pretty much, I, my plan is to look at it every year. Um, I looked at it this year and when. Granted, we're only in year two, but I said, good job last year, Brad. Here we go.
Good job, Brad. Should never enjoy his plans of the third year. Bob, any questions on the on the debt service?
No, uh, all good, thank you.
Brian, Brian?
Uh, I did this one thing before you.
Same, you too.
He's good.
Um, I forgot to mention when we were talking about data processing. There is a I T capital line item, it's been out there for a couple of years. Uh, at some point, we need to rerun this building. Um, with all the Ethernet cabling.
What's there?
We.
It was never done.
It's never been done.
Right.
So it's still in the capital plan, it could be ARPA, it could be capital.
Don't you share that little thing?
Uh, the board of selectmen get to decide what they.
I thought you had some news, but that's where I was going. Stonehill Rome.
Yeah.
They're not necessarily degrading, they're just outdated technology.
It's not bad.
Most of those cables have been, were run a long time ago.
They're not.
Some of it's been piecemealed as lot, you know, you move offices around, you gotta run more lines. Um.
This is when he says comics.
Um, so it just outdated. Um, I spoke to Nick about it. We talked about pushing it out of here, we talked about. It needs to be done at some point. Um, we're not, there's not an active request for it in front of the board of selectmen for ARPA or front. C N R.
Was it allocated on ARPA money?
Yeah, it's never been.
What's the amount?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So. Um.
You think fifty thousand?
That doesn't sound like a lot for that.
The estimate that Nick provided me said it probably, yeah.
No, 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 yeah, you're right, you think I'm that?
Yeah, yeah.
Nick said he can do it for fifteen.
Yeah.